Good afternoon. Uh, welcome to the March twenty first, twenty twenty four. Planning and zoning meeting here in Council Chambers, seven, it's seven o'clock on the nose. Um, Acting Commissioner Bruno Maini tonight.
Acting Chairman.
Acting, yeah, I do that all the time, don't I? Acting Chairman. I act like the Commissioner the rest of the time. Pledge allegiance. Let's go. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Follow the rules, all right?
Dominic Smirgolino, alternate commissioner.
Brian Condon, commissioner.
Barbara Westlin, commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate commissioner.
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
Sarah Strad, recording secretary.
Uh, tonight we are going to seat Nicole Lupo and Dominic Smirgolino.
Dominic Panichio would have been seated, but he is absent.
He's absent. All right. This is general public participation. Is there anybody in the public either online or here in person that would like to talk about anything that's not on our agenda today? Anyone? Nobody? Beautiful. Public hearings. Uh, we have SCP twenty twenty-two dash oh four dash A one. The Ridge at Monroe, one, two, seven, one, Monroe Turnpike. Uh, Brian. There's no reading for you to say?
Continued from three, seven, twenty, continued from three, seven.
Kathleen, any new exhibits?
Yeah, since our last meeting, uh, we have received, um, on March sixth, twenty twenty-four, uh, comments from the Conservation Water Resource Commission, uh, dated March fifth, twenty twenty-four, and then a response and revision by J. Edwards Associates, uh, received March fifth, twenty twenty-one, and that included, uh, the three items which the public hearing was held open in order to enter into the public record, which is information related to blasting, a lighting information, and a, uh, truck turning study.
Who's here? Ah. So.
Good evening, for the record, Jason Edwards, J. Edwards Associates Engineering Survey. Um, I don't have anything major to present, some of the just light details, turning radiuses in the blasting plant, uh, the zoning office, so I can put them up on the projector if everybody wants to.
Do you want to just go from super quick?
Yeah.
Please.
Oh. It was, it was, uh, asked at once just to demonstrate that, you know, fire and could maneuver through the turnaround sphere here. But we demonstrated that. It's been, uh, reviewed by the Fire Marshal previously. She was there. Provided a blasting plan, she's standard using, uh, the rental. It's let it pay its own. The dangers for blasting is that, you know, it just take place. You don't anticipate much of any. Uh, but if there is some, uh, they got to coordinate that through the Fire Marshal that we, uh, and they have to file any permits from state that are required. And then we also submitted UTEL and white, so, uh, the original form we had submitted or sheet we had submitted is this, which sort of indicated that it's all of them there. Uh, on the dark sky compliant, there's not, it's just an LED, it's invisible, it's no, it's a, you know, a frost. So you can't see it. That was all that we changed since the last time we were here.
All right.
Any questions that we got to answer?
Uh, let's go to the commission. Tom?
Um, were we talking about the septic tanks and if they're going to be able to accommodate the extra units?
This is not that project. Totally different.
No, this is, this is the addition from nineteen to twenty-five units. They're all individual.
Yeah, there's, there's a septic tank, and it's just a three-tier individual building. So they all have their own.
Okay, so they're gonna have their own.
Yeah, each one has their own. And that's, uh.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, it happens.
The test hold with the Health Department, since the last many months, uh, it's, uh, under review by them, but it would be conditional on, you know, especially condition.
Uh, no question. Whoa, oh, sorry.
I was just making sure there's room for those extra septic tanks and.
Yeah, you know, we've got them all spaced out for them.
I'm good.
Right? No questions at this time. Rob?
I hate to get picky on with this light situation again, but what you're saying, it's not a, a, like a incandescent screw-in bulb.
Oh, I don't think there's any sort of a bulb, and that's what I understood.
Well, part of it lights up.
So that was my concern. My concern was that when you see a lantern style like that, it typically traditionally has a light that's in it. New dark sky compliant lighting, the light sits in the
The dome.
Cover at the top and then shines down.
Because the sides don't offer anything in the way of, of, you know, of stopping, you know,
Correct.
Light pollution to the neighbors. So if that's the case, I'm, I'm good.
And it's, it's very common. It's a very common feature in light now, in order to keep that aesthetic feel.
Old look, right?
But it's downward projecting and doesn't shine outward or upward in any way.
Looking at it, it looks like it would shine out, you know? I'm good with the rest of it.
Nicole? Just one clarifying question. From the original application that we approved when it was nineteen, those were three bedrooms, and now they're two bedrooms. Did the original design, the three bedrooms, have that multipurpose room in there?
I, we had one plan that did, yeah.
Okay.
Um, but they, they were all different house plans, but they were, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
I'm good. Kathleen?
Um, one follow-up item is that, uh, we did talk to the building inspector. We do deal with this kind of situation where there's sometimes this room that there's confusion of whether it could be a bedroom and or not a bedroom. The Health Department has their own, um, definition of what a bedroom is to them. The Building Department has their own definition. It has to meet both of those. In addition to that, what we also do is say not to be used as a sleeping unit. We do just make sure that's on the record, although I understand there's some issues with enforcement of that. And we do make sure that all that's properly documented, that it technically can't be used as an additional bedroom.
Okay, can I jump back in for that? Picky backing on that. In the event that one of the unit's septic system fails, what is the protocol to take care of it?
It would be, um, the septic are all maintained by the homeowners association, so if one fails, then you have to have whoever posts your septic come out and repair it. It's only one house on each septic, so it's just the one.
And it is governed by the HOA?
Yes, they would all be controlled by the HOA.
So nobody can let their system fail indefinitely and?
No, definitely.
Got it. Okay.
All over the ground.
Yeah. It's, it's interesting at the moment.
Anybody else have a question? All right, let's go to the public. Anybody in the public?
Hold on.
Can I just read through, yeah, a couple things? So everything that we left the public hearing open for those three items, it, um, addressed all of our comments, and we did draft a resolution for the board tonight, once we hear from the public. We're happy to go through some of those conditions, um, and a couple and one minor change, um, that was requested by the applicant.
Anybody in the public like to speak on behalf? Come on up. Kathleen, can you give me? Uh, just name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Jim Morgantine, twenty-four, Underhill Road. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association at High Meadows, and this community is directly on our north boundary. Uh, we have no problem with the community. My concern is screening. Now that we've gone to twenty-five homes, I understand the homes are moving back closer to the stone wall. When you put a septic field in that backyard, do we have room to provide some screening? Because I don't think the new residents want to be looking at us living our lives in our community, and we certainly don't want to sit on our front porches staring into their backyards. So my question is simply, do we have adequate room and provision for screening? Because based upon the schematic, we've got at least six homes directly facing ours.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Mr. Edwards, back to you.
Do you have screening back there?
You want to pull it up real quick?
Meadows is back along here. So we have screening at the end of each, the cul-de-sacs, uh, and there's screening along this, this edge here, um. Our opinion is that there's, uh, also going to be natural buffer through here that's remaining, uh, there. You know, we'd be willing to work with them if they want us to add some screening to it. We do that.
What's there now?
It's woods now.
What's the screening you're talking about at the end of the cul-de-sacs?
Norway spruce. See the name on that. We'll have to confirm what that is, but.
I think it says RM.
Uh, red maple. Looks like those are scattered throughout the back there.
Have the sizes, how, how tall they'll be?
That's where they're gonna start. They'll, they'll actually get bigger.
Right, but they can plant bigger ones.
Two and a half inch maple, maples, seven foot high Norway spruce.
Big to start. Are you just screening the driveways and not the houses?
There's some screening that comes down behind the houses here. Meadows on the backside here. You come up across the driveway, um, there isn't much right here, so we can add some plants in here next to this house. Across here, if that's.
Yeah, we just, yeah, just screen the houses from them. It seems like that's what they're looking for.
You add more of the Norway spruces that those look
Yeah, we'll add.
Pretty robust.
Uh, some maybe. Sure, sure. Whatever it takes, if you want, on twelve.
Those are year-round, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's fair. Okay, is everything?
Yeah. What do you want to do?
Uh, we'd like to just add, as a condition, if we could, to have the, uh, the twelfth additional Norway spruce planted, that's with, uh, you know, reviewed by staff.
Close the hearing?
Uh, yeah.
Right? So it's closed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see what's next. SCP twenty twenty-four dash oh two, file number one, six, six, one, A, two oh five Spring Hill Road. Brian?
In accordance with CGS eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, March twenty-first, at seven PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees located up on Rhode Town Hall. SCP twenty twenty-four zero two, file one, six, six, one, A, two oh five Spring Hill Road. Special exception permit for proposed construction of a thirty-one thousand, two hundred square foot industrial warehouse facility with associated driveways, parking lots, drainage, and utilities located at two oh five Spring Hill Road. Says her map, number five, lots ten. GP two oh five Spring Hill LLC owner, solely engineering LLC representative. Notice was published in voices twice on Wednesday, March sixth and March thirteenth. Back to you.
Uh, Kathleen?
These events?
Yes, please.
Um, the original application, um, and plan set, uh, which was received uh, February fifth, twenty twenty-four, uh, Health Department comments document dated, uh, two, seven, twenty twenty-four. Town engineering comments, uh, received three, fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Conservation and water resource comments, uh, dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and planning and zoning administrator reports, uh, dated March nineteenth, twenty twelve, four. That is it.
Thank you. Who's here tonight?
I'll do myself, but we got comments today, but I have to sponsor. No, we haven't, can't go to that.
I figured, yeah.
I'll talk everybody through. You, uh, members of the commission, my name is Luke Morrow. I am a senior project manager, uh, with SORI Engineering, office at five oh one Main Street in Monroe. Um, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, also professional traffic operations engineer. Um, here tonight, uh, to present to you our application for an industrial warehouse building at two oh five Spring Hill Road on behalf of applicant who is GP two oh five Spring Hill LLC. Uh, so I'll just bring everybody through, uh, existing conditions quickly. Uh, so the site, how many acres? Just over seven acres, seven point one acres. Um, seven point one acres, um, the example, even though it's from a lot of, uh, generally vice versa property, almost a half uh, kind of, you go into middle property, so there are three point three acres located, uh, within town, you know, limited zone. I want industrial use, uh, is bound by commercial uses and industrial uses, you can see, uh, to the west side, south side, uh, east side, um, and there is both residential and open space, uh, to the north of the project. Existing, uh, site contains, uh, fifty-eight thousand square foot or stone, um. We'll call them in fact, it's where Trummel is located. Uh, that building is mostly located in Trummel, but there is a small portion of the corner that is, uh, those places to the town. And there are, there are sixty-three existing parking spaces associated with that. So we're here for you tonight, um, for our application. It's a thirty-one thousand, two hundred square foot, uh, storage warehouse. They're linked located on the, so plan, uh, north is to the left side. It's all to the right. Um, it also includes, uh, two loading docks, uh, located, uh, just in case there were some larger products coming into the warehouse building itself, however, we think most of the product will be, you know, moved in and out, uh, as needed with, uh, just three, twelve wide, uh, windows on the front side here. Um, there's also forty associated parking spaces, which is generally what's, uh, that are required by code. Uh, and, uh, site will be, will be paved with asphalt, paving with asphalt, uh, as well, as well. As far as drainage goes, um, the design was, was, um, was set to mimic existing drainage patterns, uh, if you can kind of see, there's a little outline here. Uh, there's an existing stormwater wetland on site. It's a man-made feature, uh, to turn it to wetlands over the years. Uh, so our plan to offset the increase in impervious, uh, coverage generated by the building pavement is to expand, uh, the stormwater pond, uh, so that flows will be attenuated to, uh, uh, mimic existing conditions. So we increase the rainfall off, off the site. Um, building parking areas, so I can see there's a small pipe network here, um, uh, drainage collected through the through the parking lot will be treated through a hydrogenated separator before flowing to the pond. Uh, small truck well here, uh, that will also flow through a separate hydrogenated separator to clean the water before it gets into the pond. Um, and then the larger storm events, um, you know, the storm, uh, overflow, um, as it does in existing condition, uh, just off the site, uh, on the west side over here. Uh, as part of the wetlands, uh, comments, comments and questions that came up at the hearing last week, um, there was some concern, we were providing like a French drain, uh, along the property line, uh, there's, you know, a stone wall, um, some neighbors concerned that there might be some drainage running off the site, um, in order to, to, uh, kind of accommodate that request, what we've done is created a small one for high burn along the property, uh, line here, uh, and then a small swale, so that water, uh, along the property, uh, in the, uh, north side of the building, flowed into the swale, uh, be captured, uh, and then it's piped, uh, to a small, small leadage, uh, pipe over here, uh, to be thrown, discharged into a red raft area of discharge. So, so we burned up a lot, but a lot of property that's here is going to be assured that it will not, not flood, um, of stormwater off, off the site. Um, it is designed according to the Monroe, uh, regulations, two thousand four Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual, and two thousand Connecticut DOT Drainage Manual. Uh, as far as solar erosion control codes, uh, we have simple two-phase solar erosion plan. Uh, phase one would be for declaring, uh, of trees and preparation for actual, uh, site work and building construction, so, uh, a couple of temporary sediment traps to capture and treat, uh, along with the silent setup, uh, for the kind of overflow backup. Adjacent grass areas, uh, construction entrance for trucks entering as of the site, um, self-fenced and hay bale baggage protecting existing wetlands over here, uh, the stockpile area. The self-fence on all, uh, of the construction area. In part of phase two, similar, uh, only this would be for the actual structural site work and construction, um, we've been installing self-sacred protection for new, uh, catch bases that are being installed, um, in addition to those I've actually previously mentioned. Uh, in regards to the utility design, um, this site is served by public utilities with the exception of septic, uh, coming from Spring Hill Road. There is public sewer in Spring Hill Road, however, because we are in Monroe, Trummel will not be tied. So we do have a small, uh, sixty-one year foot, uh, septic, uh, field here, uh, to accommodate the flow, a thousand gallon septic tank. This was, and I don't know if you got the officials, but this was actually signed on by Amy, I believe, last week at apartment. So it's been reviewed and approved by the Health Department. Um, James had some concerns with, um, utility lines kind of running, uh, into the truck well area here, uh, how the, you know, gas meter, electric meter, uh, whatever may, may kind of impact the ability for trucks to get in and out of the doors, so, um, we've, we've shown a relocation, uh, of those, of those lines to the front building, uh, so that they don't get anywhere that other trucks can. That was one of his outstanding comments, and then that we just passed out to everybody. Along with the stormwater change on the west side of the property. In terms of landscaping, uh, we have a pretty robust landscaping plan, um, as you can see, all the survey areas will be either planted with, uh, ground cover or shrubs or trees, or, uh, or we seeded, um, you know, with lawn or, or erosion control mix for, for some of the steeper slope areas. We do have a row of evergreen shrubs, uh, along the uh, northerly side of the property adjacent to the residential mid-zone properties. Um, to note, there is no residence here. It is only residential, it is a town or open space, so there is not a resident. I mean, it'd be, uh, no house, I should say, if we need to be adjacent to the property on the north side. I do believe there is one, uh, diagonally cross one up here. Um, in addition to the buffer plantings, uh, so some trees, a spot throughout the parking lot, a ground cover, shrubs, perennials, but not along these landscape pockets here, uh, screening, uh, evergreen screen, uh, shrubs along dumpster enclosure and around the, uh, transformer location as well, screen those from you, uh, from view. Also the board on board with screen threats, uh, along with those evergreen shrubs from dumpster enclosure, as best as we can. And then, uh, because we are, although it's a storm, an above-ground stormwater pond, um, and likely going to become a wetland, uh, or an expanded wetland, there are a number of wells, buffer plantings, uh, and shrubs and herb species. Um, that will be planted to help reestablish this as a high-quality function, uh, wetland. This was reviewed by our, our wetland scientist, and he agreed, this will have a positive impact in terms of improving function, value in the end quarter of, of the wetlands, and also stormwater pond. Uh, just to zoom in of the, of the wetland, uh, or the stormwater pond, I'm offering planting plans, you can kind of see it, uh, more up close, but there's a variety of trees on the outside, some shrubs, and a number of herbs, uh, planted, uh, to help, uh, you know, sustain that wetland back there. Uh, as far as lighting goes, um, it's been designed with dark stack compliant, uh, LED fixtures, uh, three whole-mounted fixtures, a single fixture here, single fixture here, double fixture here, uh, trying to get them as far away from the residential zone as we could, uh, you can see our foot cam contours showing where there is no uh, light spill over based on our model, probably not. There's also, uh, seven building mounted, uh, LED fixtures as well to help light up the living area and, uh, from the building for safety. Um, again, designed to minimize glare and, and light spill over, uh, at the property right. I will run through architecture real quick. Um, these were presented to ARB on March fifth. We did get a positive referral, um, no real comments, um, from them in regards to the color scheme, uh, or layout or, or materials or anything like that, but, um, the building itself is, is proposed to be constructed out of the gray, uh, corrugated metal, micro grating, uh, earth tone, nothing, nothing crazy, um, metal seam roof. Probably best to show it this way, uh, at the top here, um, then to get some natural lighting, um, some nice large aluminum, uh, you know, glass holders, but aluminum, uh, framing, uh, along the front side, uh, along all the sides of the building here. And then glass and aluminum, uh, front or, uh, lobby, kind of office space area it is, uh, can be helped. And with that, I can go through quickly, the materials are just, we just submitted, uh, to everybody, and then we can take some questions. Um, the last set of comments we got from the change of the mayo, uh, was the concerns with the utilities, um, going into the, the loading, loading dock area to remove the utility, as I explained, um, to kind of avoid any protective conflicts, um, there's a truck well there. There was concerns, we talked about with some of the stormwater flow on the north side of the site, so we made that agreement to ensure there's no stormwater on the site, to the main doors to the north. Um, and then he asked that he show a truck turning with a figure, which we had previously submitted in our, uh, engineering report, I think, that we just didn't see it. So, uh, just sort of resubmiting that, uh, for the record as well. That's attached. Uh, Kathleen has a comment she had sent over, um, in specific, uh, to give her a special, like a special section, permanent narrative, kind of going over uh, all the criteria, how this meets the criteria outlined in Zone Regulation. Uh, I can touch on that quickly, but in, in terms of, um, you know, noise, vibration, air pollution, glitter, heat hazardous waste materials, um, we don't foresee any type of not just use that site that's going to admit any, uh, you know, excessive noise, light pollution, odors, uh, whatnot. Um, there is a state statute that if a truck does come, that's a three, it's a three-minute item law, they give a ticket if they don't stop up that. So there's general statute. In terms of noise, uh, air pollution, uh, no hazardous materials or waste will be stored, uh, within the building or anywhere on site. Um, there were some questions about outdoor storage, no outdoor facilities proposed at this time. Uh, everything will be contained in the building. Um, in regards to signage, um, Kathleen asked if any signage proposed, right now there's no tenants identifying the spec built, um, for one, potentially two or three tenants, uh, depending on the square footage you might need, so, um, if they want to sign it, we're going to come up with a separate permit for that, uh, but nothing proposed at this time. Uh, no blasting, uh, should be required for this development. And, uh, there was a comment to increase the size of the buffer plantings. I think we're specing eight to ten foot high evergreens. I think the code requires ten to twelve. So at, at planting those buffer plantings, north side, ten to twelve foot high evergreens, uh, as required for the code. Um, went through, I have to see comments in regards to drainage. And then there's just some clarification for, uh, how the average height of the building is calculated, and it provides some backup calculations to show, it should be compliant with the maximum. And it provides some backup calculations to show that should be compliant with the maximum. With that, is there any questions?
Wonderful. Start with the commission.
You mentioned that there'll be no hazardous materials stored, what exactly is being stored?
So it's going to be like a commercial warehouse, if you will, so I think they're targeting probably some local businesses. Industrial uses that just needs an extra storage space. Not like a distribution warehouse or something like that, just to store excess products. They've identified a need in the marketplace for like a larger commercial storage facility. And they're in the process of trying to get some tenants for it.
Okay, so there's going to be various tenants that are going to put their stuff in?
One, two, or three, so they designed the building so they could, they could split it. Everyone would get a roll-up door, they can cut it into three, but it might as well have the one or two, but right now. We're just showing that it's a same type, just for first doors.
Any plans to sublease, like partially the building to like?
So they would, so the owner owns Trumble Printing and the building in the back, so they would be the landlord, they would stop. They would be, they would be the landlord and they would lease portions of the building out as people needed that industrial storage space.
We really don't know what is going to be stored there, it's kind of basically who needs storage?
Correct, but no, I mean. I would say they would rightly stop saying no hazardous materials if that's the concern to even be installed inside. But in terms of what specific product it would be, I don't have a answer.
And as far as the pond, is it an actual pond or is it more like the swampy area?
No, it's a pond, it's dug out, it's about six feet deep.
Six feet deep?
Right now, and then?
Radius approximately?
Say again?
The radius approximately?
About six thousand square feet, right now we're going to wind to, I think thirteen thousand or so square feet.
That water be stagnant or will there be some sort of pump that'll?
There is, it's actually built into the groundwater kind of right now, so there's, depending on the season. There could be a foot or so of water. And there right now, it looks like it was designed as a pond to hold water, stormwater type wetlands, so that would be the same use or the same function. So anytime it could dry out during the dry season, it could hold water for nap.
When it's fully, you know, when it's filled up all the way, is there any sort of pump to keep the water moving?
Yeah, there is, there's an auto-control structure, and it's also, this is still there. So the auto-control structure doesn't, wouldn't kick in until water levels about. See, the bottom pond is at three sixteen, or three seventeen, I should say. Elevation of the water we used as, for our designs, about three nineteen. And I don't think the outlet kicks in until like three twenty-one, three twenty-two. So we'd have to capture the first couple of feet, couple of feet before that kind of. That mechanism kicks in and starts to discharge. As far as the emergency spillway goes, based on our calculations, it wouldn't even kick in at the hundred-foot storm event. We would have phoned in there in case of, you know, we get two hundred-foot storms or five hundred-foot storm event, something like that. But the goal is that that emergency spillway where at the top would not kick in under, you know, most circumstances.
Thank you. The front office space, is that going to be something that would be leased out to one of the tenants?
For a tenant, yeah, they put in there, I mean, they're trying to keep it flexible, they showed like a smaller conference room, a couple bathrooms. But I think the tenant was, I think they showed three offices, so everybody, each, if they were split up into three pieces, each one gets some office.
And then, can you go back to the planting?
Yeah.
So you're doing the buffer on the back, but the residence, you said the only like actual residence is right on that kind of corner? Is it possible to do more buffering kind of on that far end?
So there's actually, there's actually, this is a little, we're actually. We're not disturbing to within about thirty feet of the property up in this corner, so that's all going to be natural. Or it'll have to. It'll be natural forested.
There's already forested.
So yeah, yeah. Plus that, plus door limits, plus then you can see this additional as you go further. There's pretty, you know, hundred-foot, two hundred-foot, you know, buffer that's going to remain.
Thank you. Rob?
So there hasn't been a tenant identified for anything at this point, there has?
There is none.
Okay. And the delivery trips that are going to be coming in for whatever tenant winds up there, are they going to have access from Hickory Lane?
No.
No?
Nope, everything is from the spring.
Okay.
No access.
That's good.
Yep.
That was a biggie for me.
And we don't, it's not an operation, we're going to anticipate full-size truck coming in every day. It's there for flexibility, but I would venture to guess it's mostly going to be, you know, like a box truck type of thing.
Hard to know though, without having a tenant?
It's true.
You know what I mean? What we're anticipating really doesn't matter, you know, I mean, you're going to rent it to somebody and they're going to want to do what they want to do with it. How many, with the septic system that's proposed now, how many bathrooms is anticipated, three?
There are three bathrooms, but the septic is designed based on a maximum of, I think we said. We said forty employees, assuming every single of those parking spaces was taken out.
That's what I was, yeah.
It's kind of an overkill, because I don't, you know, for warehouse used products kind of sitting there, I don't anticipate where they're going to need all those parking spaces.
Yep.
But it's designed for forty, forty.
The areas where the dumpsters are, how many, how many spots are going to be allocated for dumpsters, or how big is that area?
The dumpster enclosure is, does not take up any parking spaces. It's actually no parking. The closest parking spaces are across the drive aisle from it. And that area is. Eighteen by twelve, so it did be double dumpster enclosure.
With three tenants, that may be a problem.
We could, I mean, we could certainly look to expand to the other sizes.
Yeah, but it will. If you have a third tenant, nobody wants to be sharing their dumpster.
Sure.
And then there's dumpsters outside the enclosure. So you want to, you want to definitely modify that.
Sure, we can, we can, you know, as a condition, we can show them their third dumpster, yeah.
Do you have a picture, like a picture with your renderings that that shows the building from the backside? And, you know, the part that the closest neighbor would potentially be able to see?
Sure, so that's this, that's this view.
No high windows back there at all?
There are.
Are those the high windows?
Those are Jeff's center, I can't see, they might be twenty feet of upgrade.
Well, the others, the other side kind of had two rows of windows, didn't it?
Uh, that's just, that's the, there's just a class, glass aside wrapping around with an office.
I got you, so those windows do carry around to the other side?
Yep, just to, just to this loading dock side here, and then the front side, which is facing the way for the residential.
Okay.
No, yeah, no, no glasses, glass at level.
Gotcha.
No, yes.
So, you know, I'd like to see what this looks like from that area, is there any way that we can, maybe I'll take a ride over there and take a look. One moment. We'll take a look at it, but if there's any way to get an idea of what that's going to look like from, from that neighbor's point of view. So we could better kind of gauge what we're looking for as far as screening is concerned. And I know right now you're off-season, so it's going to be worst-case scenario?
Sure, we can, we can see if we could do a particular cross-section or something.
You'd probably get cooperation from the neighbors being that they don't want to see it, I'm sure, so it's, you know?
I mean, if it's any contemplation, you can, you could see, this is what we're dealing with from the north side, so this is all.
All wooded?
All wooden untouched, so, I mean, I, I don't think you're going to be able to see, you've got a couple hundred feet there.
Okay.
Plus over plantings, I don't foresee that being an issue. We're also, where the buildings proposed at finished floor, if that's right.
Yeah, what's the elevation difference?
So the buildings proposed at finished floor, three twenty-nine. The elevation at the top, the top corner of the property here is around elevation three thirty-six. So we're down about seven feet, and then, you know, I don't have an exorbitant amount of survey off property, but it does continue to slope up. So we got it kind of down.
Got it.
Down below, we're not above that.
All right, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
Nicole?
Thank you. Just, I guess it's just a housekeeping question, explain to me, and again, maybe it's a few too. So the property's in Monroe, but you're using a Trumble driveway to get out to Spring Hill?
It's almost by the same property.
Okay, so what happens if he sells the property in Monroe?
It's all one.
It's all one?
Even though, even though across this town line, it's still one.
There's never a chance this is going to turn to an island if I can't get out of my property?
Uh, I don't think it can. It would have to go through subdivision process to be not compliant.
Okay.
So I think you're protected.
All right, no other questions, thank you.
Yeah, no, it, it happens.
Okay. That's it.
I'm with Rob. I, I do have, I'm not sure about that couple hundred feet to the neighbor.
We'll just have to take a look at it.
Right, that's why I said I'm with Rob. I think, I think that would be kind of important to get a, to get a view from, from that perspective, to kind of get an idea of what's going on over there. Good about not going through Hickory. Would have been, would have been awesome if we could have shared the, the sewer with Trumble. I know they've done it on previous projects with us, but I guess it's theirs and not ours, so what can we do? The inside of the building, is it just open space?
It was open space and then they would provide their own racking.
So?
So it's like a thirty, thirty-foot high ceiling, get rid of it.
Okay, so, so you're looking, so they're looking for tenants that are just looking for basic open space to stack?
Exactly.
Just on top of stuff?
Yeah. Strictly warehouse storage.
Strictly warehouse storage. And if they get multiple tenants in there, I'm assuming they're going to wall off?
They could do a demising wall. In between, so you can kind of see, there's a door, it's a little difficult to see, I hope you can see these vertical lines here. But basically, you could, you could imagine along the common line, if you put up the.
Right, and you said each one has an overhead door, so like each take their own space?
Yep.
So the only area that, that they're proposing to have like offices or blocked-off areas are where this, right there. Yeah, we definitely need to, I think we need to put in a provision for, for what we can and cannot put into this facility. Because I think there are certain things that.
Fertilizers or whatever, flammable, yep, there's them.
Someone may be storing propane tanks for their propane business, but I don't know if we really want that, just saying, just something like that. But I definitely think we need to, we need to get a, a list of things that we want, or actually, things that we don't want into these buildings. I think that would be, that would be a huge help.
Would that be looking for us to provide or for you guys to come up?
I think it's going to, I think it's going to have to be a collaboration between, between the owner of the building, I think, and. And staff and us to figure out like some of the things that, I mean, if we just leave it at hazardous stuff, we could, I guess we could.
Nothing hazardous, right?
I guess we have a list.
You could say it's a discretion, fire marshal, you know, they'd have.
Unless we follow the same state regulation that's self-stored, we can mirror that back.
So part of the zoning regulations does require them to list a series of standards, which I haven't had a chance to review. They did respond to it, and part of that is for them to confirm that there'll be no hazardous materials. It doesn't go into listing specific things, so it's kind of a catch-all, so it would be more of, yeah, how do we want to define? No hazardous material will be stored.
Something that has to be labeled with a placard, right? Kind of cover it. Like, you know, if you're transporting something flammable, it's got to have a little flammable.
Maybe.
Or explosive or corrosive. Yeah, but I think there's certain things on that list that I think we can.
Yeah, we don't want it to be so restrictive that you can't lease the place out either.
You know?
We can, staff can talk to the fire marshal to see if he has like a general list for us to use as kind of our basis.
Is there certain like soaps and stuff that are?
So many things have those placards on them that you would never even imagine.
If we, if we just go, I mean, I think that's something we need to discuss a little bit.
And then there's also quantities, the amount like certain things will, will need a placard over certain amounts of.
Sure, so, yeah.
So I think that's something we should, we should definitely think about, Scott?
Yeah, it will be a sprinkler.
Yeah, I hear you, but if you.
Yeah, no, yeah, no.
No hazardous materials and your sprinklers gone, and then it goes into the ground and then.
Sure.
For now, I'm good. Kathleen, you have anything?
We have not had a chance to review their response to comments, as I briefly looked through it. The town engineer only had several, the application is still in front of wetlands right now. That have been heard, but they have not voted to approve. However, the majority of the comments, I believe, have been flushed out and are reflected here on the plans. As was mentioned, they did receive a favorable review from the Architecture Review Board. And yes, most of my comments were already went through. My concerns were just making sure that we have in the record no hazardous material, there won't be any noise issues. It'll be in compliance with the industrial use regulations. Just to make sure that, again, because we don't know what tenant is in, they are bound by this. And we have it, you know, as part of the record for the approval. And again, screening, just to make sure that the size of the plantings and things of that nature, especially for the scrutiny areas, are in compliance. And the one thing for the commission to review is, the majority of the planting is obviously in the stormwater basin. And those items and the erosion control for the hundred-foot upland review area is going to be bonded through wetlands. I did notice that the town engineer's memo did not have bonding for planning and zoning. And so the question to this commission is just, do you want an additional bond for planning and zoning? Which would include the erosion control outside of that hundred-foot buffer area? And it would really include kind of the screening that's located to the north. And I'm happy to direct the engineer to do so, he had not done it, so I just wanted to make sure that was, that was clear.
I think, speaking on my behalf, I think that's a good safeguard for us to have.
Right.
I, I think, that's just, that's just me speaking, I don't know what the rest of the commission will. Actually, it's amazing how this mouse runs a little once in a while in my head. What are we doing with timeframe, meaning it's fully rented? What are the hours of operation going to be?
Uh, I believe there's statutes for.
Sure, but if it's a warehouse and it's storage.
I know, I can.
I don't want trucks backing in here at midnight.
What I'd recommend is we keep it open, like a comeback response for you guys.
Yeah, like a normal business hours, like five, six, maybe even seven, possibly. I think we need to be.
Yep.
Having some of the neighbors and.
Yeah, we can get you a more.
And now, another question, are you going to gate this? Or is it just going to be free-flowing from, from Spring Hill all the way to the back? Or is there going to be a gate to get to, like an after-hours gate or something?
The intent was not to gate it. They wanted to leave it open, and that would allow for fire rises as well.
So you can still gate it?
It's still a gate, yeah. The intent is to not.
Yeah, the building next to it, to the left there is gated, it's gated right in the, between the two buildings. It's not really a bad idea to consider because, you know, vagrants could go back there and, and, you know, leave bottles and this and that. But there's, the building right to the left of it has got a yellow gate that runs across after-hours as well.
Yeah, it does.
I, I mean, again, speaking for myself, I like the gates for these rare buildings just because you can hide back there as a. Young teen, I might have done once or twice in my day. And you can do stupid things back there, so I, I definitely think it's at least a deterrent. I mean, it doesn't stop any, doesn't fully stop the person that wants to get there, but.
Yeah, we could, we'll run it by the.
Definitely a deterrent.
We'll run it by the developer, get your response, they're going to be able to, sure.
And.
Staff will also need to run that by the fire marshal.
Correct. I'm pretty much good with my questions now. Let's go to the public, anybody here in the public that would like to speak on behalf? Just name and address for the record, please, and just, please just direct us. Thank you.
Derek Hoffman, twenty-two Hickory Lane.
Thank you very much. If you want to stand there, you can turn it to.
I, I tried, I joined the Zoom call from my phone, will you share pictures like that somehow?
Oh, yeah, up on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
The problem is, I think I have to make the host and then he has to make me the.
Is there some way I can share, I have my phone or Google Drive or something like that?
Well, how about you tell us what you got first, and then we'll figure out if we want to see it.
All right, so I am, I'm the house that's right here. I have pictures showing actually how close this would be to my. Um, I have pictures showing actually how close this would be to my house, also to my neighbors who are the ones right above me. Um, I have concerns with, uh, multiple things, one of them, you were mentioning that the windows on the backside are going to be, I think it was twenty feet high. Um, as of right now, if I could show you the pictures, what that would look like is just tons of lights blaring into my backyard, into my living room. Um, the woods, they said was substantial or not substantial, there, it's, it's a pretty small lot right next to me, um, and to be honest, there aren't that many trees. Um, also, it's the end of the cul-de-sac, and if you, uh, see from here, if the trucks are gonna be coming in, are they, again, I have the same concern with the, uh, nighttime and hours of operation, sound pollution, uh, of that sort, except then the lights are gonna be shining right at my house through there, and if you said that the trees were gonna be, you know, twelve feet high, but the windows are gonna be twenty feet high, how is that gonna stop any light from, from coming into our house, especially in the winter time like that? Um, maybe just for a sec.
You also need to take in consideration, they may dig down twenty feet from the ground, the twelve-foot high might come, might get up, and they're gonna grow. And they grow over a course of time as well.
Yep. And then the, the other big concern is, please, just, based on this being, uh, you know, quite cul-de-sac, is this going to affect the property value of my house? Just, you know, if you, right now, it's a house, you know, very private, both to the left and right, um, I'm just concerned that it's gonna really drop my property value, just having this massive warehouse.
Thank you. Anybody else? Name an address for the record, please.
Uh, Madeline U, twenty-seven Hickory Lane.
Thank you.
We are actually away from here as well. The property. Uh, we are actually at help right here. Um, I do have my plug, the USB picture.
Yes.
Need to pop mine up. Pop yours out. Yeah, that's right. I think this would actually answer, uh, Mr. Westland's, uh, question in regards to seeing the property from our site. I actually took these pictures just before we came here to get an idea. So this is a view from our actual driveway. So, literally standing atop of my driveway, and as the, it's proposed, so we actually have a stone wall that's running horizontal. It's not part of their, uh, property, because their property ends, I think, like fifty feet down from there. So the, uh, parking lot that they're proposing is actually going to end right here, or start right there. Um, in accordance with their drawings, with their screens and all that, uh, we actually sit up on the hill, you can see the pitch of it, so we're pretty much a lookout point at this point across the entire, we can see all the way to the twenty-five, for when it'd be, like, a clear winter day. Um, we have big concerns for this issue of, you know, the privacy, seeing the facility, is all the light pollution that comes with it. Um, we also have some pretty big concerns about privacy. Um, this picture right here is literally from, uh, our master bedroom, uh, bathroom, uh, along with three other bathrooms that are on the front, uh, two other bathrooms on the front facing on the second floor, and then one bathroom that's on the main floor, but, uh, I mean, we have some concerns about clear lines of sight to our house from the property and being able to see someone that just happens to want to be weird like that, because there's people like that in this world. Uh, but, um, we're concerned that, like, you know, uh, previously Derek had said about, you know, trucks pulling in and light pollution and noise pollution, um, I, myself, I have a supply chain manager who actually works, uh, in a building, where we store stuff, where we have forklifts, which I would assume this company, if they're going to have a building with high racking, they're gonna need forklifts. Are all these forklifts going to be electric? Because if they're not electric, they're gonna be propane, if they're propane, hazardous materials do have to be stored outside, because they're not allowed to be on the property inside the building. Uh, so, I do have a multitude of concerns of this facility going up here, uh, that's between all those, the light, noise, and, you know, our privacy concerns, property value aside as well, but those are, uh, my few topics for the.
I appreciate it, thank you. Anybody else in the public? Just name and address for record, please.
My name's Bulby Leview, I live at twenty-seven Hickory Lane.
Thank you.
I also lived in that house. Um, and like my husband had mentioned, we have a plethora of concerns ranging from health and safety, um, to a lot of the unknowns, the presentation tonight was not conclusive in providing information regarding what's being stored, who the tenants are, but what we do know for sure is who the tenants of Hickory Lane are, and we are residents paying toward the town of Monroe, this is something that we want to do, we want to live here. When we see presentations like this that are going to devalue our home, propose a whole plethora of unknowns like health, safety, asphalt, which has been known to have pathogens and health effects related to lung disease, you know, the trees, the privacy, the safety, Hickory Lane and Eastdale Drive, which is off of it, it's another cul-de-sac. It's a family neighborhood, there are kids, they play. We're going to now be having this huge warehouse building there, as you saw from the pictures that my husband showed, the lack of privacy is hugely concerning, so much so that I've considered moving, because I just can't even fathom having a warehouse there with windows so high, even understanding that the foundation is lower. Ten to twelve-foot trees are not going to cover these high windows, they're going to be seen right into our house. I know they grow over time, but over a long time. So it's, it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel like there is enough known identities here, don't know who the tenants are. We don't know if they're going to change their mind or rent to different tenants, given the unknowns, given the things that could or could not be, you know, the hours of operations, if this had to go through, I would really appreciate the gate. We've already had issues with teenagers in the, in the forest and everything, so I can only imagine what a hangout spot this would be. I know that I speak for myself and our neighbors who have young kids, that the privacy and having a huge warehouse with windows where you can see into our homes is a very unsettling and disturbing fact. And I don't agree that the forest plants of these trees would be anywhere near sufficient. Those are my concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Name an address for the record, please.
John Delage for Hickory Lane. I guess I'm more, uh, mostly concerned about the aesthetics of everything.
I'm, I'm so sorry, is anybody can turn that mic towards you? No, thank you, I, I appreciate it, I apologize, I only have one mic.
I'm concerned about the aesthetics as you drive down our cul-de-sac. I mean, I can think that the worst-case scenario in my mind is that this is like a fifty-foot-high warehouse. And as you're driving down, and we see all, we have all these houses there, and all of a sudden we see a warehouse at the end of the street. And that's basically what my concern is. So, when they were gonna do some developing in the back years ago, the builders came and they, they said that you wouldn't be able to see it from our neighborhood, and they would fly balloons up so we could see, well, we could all see all the balloons. But that's my concern about it, it's the height of it and what we can see driving down.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Uh, Kathleen, can you just switch to online so we can? Anybody online? I see none. Back to the applicant, please.
So, you know, as I stated, I think we wanna keep this open, so we can get some, maybe some more definitive answers um, to some of the concerns that were brought up by the residents, but, um, what I'll do is I'll go back, um, to the developer, see if there's a way to maybe remove some of all those windows on the backside, at least we can kind of take care of that concern, um, with the light pollution, uh, creepers. I don't know what else. I get it. Um, and see if we can do some, some, uh, some bulked up, um, you know, some of that, that buffer area to help appease, uh, trying to block the view of the building, uh, as best as we can. Um, in terms of, we said, we'll, we'll go back to the hours of operation, uh, what, what they may be storing on site. Um, just, just for clarification, because we are a budding residential, we can't do any pavement or building construction within fifty feet of the property line, so not that it's not a valid concern, but I just want them to be aware, we're not building right up to that wall, we're at least fifty feet, uh, away from that wall, and trying to buy as, as much buffer length and, and screening as we can to try and block that view. Um, in terms of, um, I know, uh, she raised a concern with toxins in the asphalt, so, um, the water will be treated by hydrodynamic drainage, uh, with the maintenance project, clean them out, uh, just for those reasons, to make sure, uh, it doesn't reach the wetlands, uh, and eventually flow into the groundwater and go off, and off along with sand and grit and everything else that comes along with that, as a part of it, so. Uh, with that, our response for now, we can see if we can provide some more specific answers.
Any questions? Ryan, um, for parking spaces, are you overparked there?
We're parked right.
The exact amount, well, per the regulation or per what you, you?
No, no, you're right, I, I would like to provide less, but I think we need a variance.
Let me pull up the, uh.
So my code will require thirty-nine, I guess.
Are we allowed to ask them to remove without, they'd have to go and get a variance regardless?
I had a question, um, as far as, you know, I know you're gonna get back to some hours of operation, but also, the lighting, will it be on all night? Um, and then the exterior and the interior lights, they be left on during the night?
Yeah, typically, they can do like an emergency circuit to try to keep just what's wired on, but we can get some more specific.
Also, can you look to see if the lights, I, I was just looking at the fixture, um, if there's like a house-side shield option, like, I see that they're forward-throwing based on the actual book candles, but sometimes they can add an additional, like.
It's like a, like a backplate or something.
Yeah, a house-side shield on the back.
So they are, and I have the detail showing it, they are recessed up into the fixture.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll see if there's an option to shield, especially from.
Yeah, there's no reason to be lighting in the forest area.
Yeah, no reason, yeah, yeah.
And just for the record, I'll, I'll be taking a ride down there, Hickory, tomorrow morning, if you see a white pickup truck, that's me.
My SUV, I was just saying the same thing.
Um, and then. And then two items, can you provide, uh, the bond form, um, to our town engineer?
We, we did.
You did, okay.
And the latest, but I can send it, yes.
I'll follow up with them, and then can you also, um, on the plans, uh, if you do submit plans, if not, I'll make it a conditional approval, just make it clear what the natural areas to remain are gonna be. Um, and we had talked with Wetlands about the significant trees, I think that would be something actually in your favor to show, um, which of those are going to remain and be protected as part of this.
What color is the back of the building?
Yeah, totally, like, like that, right, yeah, we, you know, we're going before it's something simple. I, I, I was told that ARB, it looks like it's green, it's not, um, there's.
Is it B-green on the backside?
Can it be green on the backside?
Blend in, might blend in, or brown or something that might. Oh, you.
Preference?
Just better find out.
I don't know if I can do that.
Invisible. My, my design opinion is that in the winter, the green's gonna pop, so like, gray is actually gonna probably.
Gray works anytime.
Go into the landscape and blend in more than, um, uh, green would be.
I would just look if there's any way to get creative with moving some of those spots in that corner somewhere else on the property.
Parking spots?
Yeah, and then you could throw more buffer there, might be a good idea, I mean, I don't know if it's possible, it looks very tight, but.
The, the roof is gray as well?
Yeah.
The property owner owns the entire lot, right, so, yeah.
I guess I'll ask for interpretation, so we're technically overparked by, I think, eight, if you count what's in trouble. Would you?
So it's in Trumbull, but it's on the same property, right?
Well, my question is, would we, would we humor that or not? I think that I can say, yes, we can take some away, but I don't.
I, I'll look into it, I'm, I'm not gonna give you a.
The property on one-eleven that we approved that was part on, part in Monroe, part in Trumbull, um, because I wanna say we counted parking sp, on twenty-five, yeah, on twenty-five, I wanna say we counted the Trumbull parking towards the Monroe parking, because it was one property. So at least there's a precedent that was set by us, if that's the case.
Yeah, just to pressure test this on, on, on my end, I can't regulate them, them keeping that parking intact, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Oh.
Well, we have.
Yeah, you mean Trumbull could get rid of their parking spots.
Yeah, and you, and then I really stay associated with that.
Yeah.
We're good? We're gonna leave it open?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. Uh, there are no site plans and sl, plans, uh, let's go to deliberations and determinations. We have any?
You do.
Yay.
All right.
Everybody see Bill Holswort sneak in?
I missed him, so, oh.
Um, so the first item, which was already on the agenda, is S D P twenty-two-four oh-three, file number one-six-six-two-five-fifteen-five-seventeen Main Street. The public hearing was closed at the last meeting, staff was instructed to draft, um, a resolution for this meeting. Uh, that was circulated to the team, uh, to you guys today, apologies, we had a couple items we had to work out on our end to make sure that, uh, we had all of our eyes crossed and give me a moment as I.
Can I correct the typo on the fir, first page?
What's the typo on first page?
It says five fifteen-five-seventeen Monroe Turnpike.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh. Usually I'll let normal typos.
Good, that's a good catch. All right, so.
We get a bonus warehouse in town that we didn't even know about?
Um, the uh, the approval was drafted, as part of the approval, we are setting the effective date for S D D number five, so the way procedurally we started working with the S D Ds is in order to address, um, Commissioner, um, Ambrosi's concern about when does the S E D actually get applied to the land. As part of the resolution for the S D D, we note that we will set the, um, effective date as part of the S E P resolution, so when this goes tonight, it is setting the effective date for C C A R A A twenty-two-four oh-one, uh, for April fifth, oh, twenty-twenty-four, which is also in addition, a change that will be made to that. Um, and then the conditions of the approval as currently drafted and can be added and changed is the final site development plan shall be incorporated, all the revisions prior sign-off. The project shall be developed in accordance with the adopted statement of use and standards for the site development of S D D number five. The list of prohibited items shall be incorporated in the tenant rental agreements. The rear building roof and exterior wall shall be a dark grade to further blend into the landscape, that was something that was discussed. Uh, that was something that was discussed at the last meeting, um, it is something that can be done, I leave it up to the commission if you want that to be incorporated as part of the, um, conditions. The landscape plant shall relocate, uh, evergreen plantings closer to the building in order to better screen the rear, so they were talking about relocating a couple of those right up into the building so that you're not looking at it from an angle, and then the town engineer did have a couple comments on his report dated three-twenty-one twenty-twenty-four, including the posting of the bond and the amount of forty-three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, I didn't know if there was any other additional conditions related to screening that the commission wanted.
Uh, we can't, because we can't add anything for the other property, that's something that's.
Not on there, yeah, not.
It's cited on anyway.
Yeah. Discussion?
The rear building utilities are gonna be on the roof. Rear building utilities are going to be on the roof? Like the compressors and all that, we know that?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can.
But the renderings, I don't remember seeing them.
That might be a little bit more of an eyesore if they got all that stuff up there.
We're seeing it up there.
Those questions to ask when? Yeah, you can see her.
I feel like that will be the only question. I think, I don't think they're on top, I think they're behind. I don't remember that.
Right, the plans are online, Susan will pull up.
Yeah, they're not gonna have a roof plan in the drawings.
Wait, um, was there a spot on the plan that showed where you to, like, sometimes there's usually a little. If it's not on the roof, sometimes it shows it in the footprint.
Not that's well labeled.
Okay.
There are some boxes, you know, around.
Up against the buildings?
I mean, there's some mechanical units up against the building.
That's usually, so that's probably not going to be roof. Or it is a flat roof, so. Possibility.
Can we talk about the color of the roof?
Yes, I've set up, and we're gonna make it a condition of approval that the back roof is.
Dark gray.
Dark gray color, not.
And I did confirm with the applicant that.
During the meeting, he said, no, it's like a metal reflective and then.
Yeah, and again, they can't, they can't enter anything into the record at this point, but in case you guys want to make it a condition of approval. We just checked in with them, but it is possible, and yes, staff is telling you that it's possible to make that as a condition.
Wow, I remember this job.
I'll tell you that their, their rendering does not show any mechanicals on, on the roof, um.
But in the condition that anything on the roof should be uniform or painted, same color?
I don't know if that's possible. Like, I just don't know if it's physically possible, you know?
If you could actually paint certain mechanicals.
I mean, you can, yeah.
There's none up there to paint.
What's up there to paint?
Say if there, if there was, we don't know for sure.
No, there's, they're at the back of the building.
It doesn't mean there's not maybe additional on the roof, but it, that would be shared both, it's not, it looks, it looks like.
I got the answer.
So they'll be screened by the uh, plant. Perfect. Anything else? Any other discussion? No? Take a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve SCP dash two zero two four dash zero three, file number one six two two.
I'm so sorry, with an effective date for STD number five of April fifth twenty twenty-four, just for the record, so sorry.
Yes, for the record.
Do I have to repeat that?
No, no, I don't, I don't think.
I want to hear you repeat it. I have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second. We have a second. Let's call it. Done.
Reggino, yes.
Condon, yes. Mayini, yes.
Weston, yes.
Lupo, no. Four one, passes. What else we got?
The sex, next item is uh, twelve seventy-one Monroe Turnpike. Uh, special exception permit approval amendment modification, so. This keeps all the conditions of the original improvement on intact. Um, and this is just for the changes for the nineteen units to the twenty-five units. Um, for the proposed additional units, um. A couple small items uh, that will be changed to this resolution is the assessment.
What, what word was that?
It's been a long week, guys, it's been a long. Assessment's number will be added to the first page, um. There is a note about here about uh, they will be blasting, so there is a note in here about blasting limits. Uh, there's a mention of crushing, they will not be crushing, so that will be deleted from the resolution. And the conditions of the resolution include the driveway at unit sixteen shall be flipped to align with the eastern side of the house. That's in order to meet our uh, driveway regulations, that was a comment from the town engineer. Fire hydrant location shall be coordinated slash located by the fire marshal and the ferry and water company. A blasting letter will be provided to the two hundred fifty foot of butters within the two weeks prior to the start of blasting, providing a range of dates that blasting may occur. And clearly outlining blasting warning whistle protocols. Um, and for our earlier discussions, provide additional screening along the High Meadow uh, property line.
Beautiful.
Uh, I'm sorry, and one more item, on page four, um, there's a. Uh, prior to zoning permit, there's a note about verification of the state of Connecticut deep approval acceptance of the removal of existing oil-water separator and holding tank. An approval for the installation of a new oil-water separator connection of floor drains, that is going to be deleted as it is not applicable to the site.
Any discussion? Tom? Renan?
I'm glad the neighbors came in and were able to solve their concerns, no?
Nicole? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SCP dash two zero two two dash zero four dash A one, the ridge at Monroe, twelve seventy-one Monroe Turnpike.
I have a, I have a motion, I have a motion, I have a second by Nicole. Hold up.
Reggino, yes.
Condon, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Weston, yes.
Lupo, yes.
Passes five one, five zero, five zero. I don't know where that six first came from. I'm here hunting spirit. Nicole, new applications, we have minutes?
She do not.
You do not have minutes? Uh, any zoning matters? Yes, right? Yes, I, oh, no, right? There's a letter here.
Yes, I'm gonna do that in like, in the report, we can talk about that. Um, so i- it's just a letter from um, Williams Holdworth, um, asking for both. Uh, this commission as well as wetlands that due to the current volume of applications that are coming into staff. Uh, we are going to do exactly what we just did tonight, which is uh, we ask that the commission direct staff to do. Draft the resolution and allow us two weeks um, to then um, create the resolution and circulate it for the commission's review. And part of approval.
Is that what we usually do?
I was gonna say, what are we doing now?
Kind of normal, isn't it?
That is kind of normal, there's been a couple conditions where that has not been happening. Um, between both of the commissions, so we're just asking to.
Can you give an example, just so we know?
Two sixty-nine Pretty Hill. Which happened at the last meeting, so all three of those resolutions, um, we heard voted on, closed.
Right.
And approved that night.
Oh, and you don't want to do that, and you guys don't want to do that anymore?
No, we would like to allow two weeks to, for staff to draft, just to make sure that, you know, procedurally here. We've included everything we have in the wec- record, you guys have delivered everything you need to.
I thought we were trying to, you know, kind of address the problem, yeah, and expedite things. Because there were so many applications, this kind of helps things move rather than holding people up. Wha- what is the benefit to, to go in the extra two weeks, just so you guys?
If not, I need, I, I would want to start drafting the resolutions prior to the meeting, and then we're doing kind of this. Oh, let's add this, let's add that into the resolution, whereas this allows me to take all the public's comments, all of your comments. Make sure we have all the conditions of approval in alignment, talk to the town engineer, make sure we include everything in his comment memo. Um, because there's just a bunch of different memos that allows us time to just kind of get everything together.
I don't think two weeks is slowing things down too much.
Well, we came from a period a few years ago where this was just bogging everything down. So every time it turned around, we were handing out two extra weeks to everybody that we possibly could, and it was, you know, time's money for these guys, you know? Um, if it's a real problem for you guys, obviously, we can, you know, we can go that way, I kind of like moving things forward, but.
So here's, here's where I stand. Rob's a hundred percent right. When I first got on the commission, it was two weeks. And then it was a discussion, and it just seemed like it took forever.
Ask a couple more questions and go another two weeks, and you know, from the applicant's standpoint, it just seemed like it was almost by design.
So then when, you know, some unfortunates happened, um, a new regime came in and it seemed like. But on the other hand, when our old regime was here, it seemed like things also slipped through the cracks. With approving them on the spot, so I kind of get it, I kind of get both sides.
They slipped through the cracks in some cases deliberately.
Well, with the old regime, I agree with you. I just don't want to see anything slip through the cracks.
I think that's kind of the issue, staff understands that the goal is to. Give the applicant as many upfront comments as possible, so not kind of nickel and dime them through the comment process. So we do understand that that is still the priority of the commission and of this, you know, current. First selectmen and staff and department, so we still are making the conscious effort to do that. But once we just get to this part, we're just asking for another two weeks so that. We can make sure procedurally everything is being done correctly, the resolutions are being written correctly, and we have the opportunity to make sure things aren't slipping through the cracks.
And on our end, we just need to be more conscious of the fact that we need to kind of ask the questions that we can the first time up and not keep on. Doling them out each week, like that does happen, you know, come up with new thing, well, if the application changes, it's understandable, but just to, you know. Throw out, you know, just keep raising the bar every time the applicant comes in, it's frustrating.
And just for um, just for reference, the way the state statutes are written is after the public hearing closes. The commission has sixty-five days in order to make a determination and vote. And this commission sometimes does it in zero days.
Like today, right, we just did it.
Or we're, well, no, you guys gave me two weeks for both of these.
Yes, sir.
Didn't we just close the ridge?
Correct, but you directed me that it was most likely going to be a favorable vote for me to vote. So I have no problem with that, I have no problem that we get to a certain point.
But it was still held open till today anyway.
But we had the majority of the bulk of comments that I had all the information I needed to write, and the couple little things that we added in the end. Is not a big deal at all, so it's not a hard and fast rule, like you have to close it, you give me another two weeks, if we're basically through it, we just have a couple items. I have no problem with the way that twelve seventy-one Monroe.
My fear are sometimes we have the meetings once a month, and what are you doing that?
Let's do it in the summer, right? Or the holidays, sometimes.
Construction, construction in the summer is at its height, it's not, at, at, at its height in the winter.
Yeah, no, you're right.
If we have the opportunity to draft some of it before that meeting, especially if we've already had a meeting. I think it's more of like two sixty-nine Pretty Hill was open, closed, and voted on in one meeting. Um, that was just.
Can we ask of you to say, hey, I would like two weeks for this one? Is that something that you guys could do, because maybe, maybe there is something like two sixty-nine where there's so much going on there? That's something like that, but something like, maybe something a little bit simpler, we could.
Two sixty-nine was actually pretty simple, it was just a lot, it was three different.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, it's three different applications, something like that, you could say to us, hey, can, can I just write this up and overlook it? Take two weeks, and then some of the other ones, maybe it is something we can.
Like a slam dunk type thing, something that comes in.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, is that, is that possible or not possible?
It, I mean, it's potentially, my concern is like the one meeting, the open and close, one meeting vote, that is, that is.
So let's not do those.
Yeah, whereas like, if we've already had one meeting, we don't have two weeks to write, you know, the resolution. Again, kind of like twelve seventy-one, I believe.
But those one and done meetings are very few and far.
I think so too.
I've only been here for three months, so.
Yeah, I think that's. Might have been the only one we've ever had, to be honest, besides like. Well, we got rid of a lot of those by doing the staff approvals for a lot of smaller things, because that was a big thing when it was like. Hey, can I, you know, do this?
Yeah, why are we talking about this, so? All right, I understand where you're coming from.
I think we're still being progressive and.
What else?
Um, just to be clear, because I do keep getting these questions from applicants, do you guys always want full-size drawings?
Leon said that he did.
Yeah, yeah, Leon can't read the small ones.
Okay, so always still full, I have no uh, problem with that, I just get that.
Yes, full size.
Unless we can say yes for one and none for the other, then yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just a follow-up from six fifteen Main Street, Bestin Backyards, the comment that was made.
Yeah.
Uh, so I did have a chance to go out um, during the evening, I agree with the comment that the lights are bright. So the issue is, is it's the lights underneath the canopy in the front, that is really the concern. And the problem is, is they're not recessed into the underhang, they're dropping down, so you can see the bulb and you can see go there. So we've been talking to solely engineering, the intent was always for those actually to be removed, they just had not been removed. Um, so we'll just hold on to the bond until they have the opportunity to update that lighting, Pearl was, which was actually. Um, in agreement to that, and hopefully that should resolve that issue.
The issue was for the neighbors across the street? You're saying this was on the front of the building?
Yeah, it's on the.
Well, that's where I, because I'm just gonna see two just driving down the street.
People on Bart Road, yeah.
Now, the.
It's bright.
Yeah, no, I seen it, yeah.
At the lounge, who can see it?
It's really right.
And they have tinted ones.
So the Bestin Backyard sign is still lit, so that will continue to be lit, which is in compliance with the code. Our code does allow for lettering and logos to be lit from. Behind, it's not ultrabite, and they still have a pole in the rear for security that's actually pretty tall. That was pre-existing and just being relocated as part of this application. Um, but it's like the old kind of yellow worm halogens, so it's not the same thing as the concern. Which is like this kind of piercing LED light that you can see the bulb and it's kind of in your face. So we did have a chance to follow up on that, they are aware of that, they're working to rectify that. Once we've had a chance to confirm, once those changes are made, we'll come back and start a new commission for our properties.
Wonderful, what else?
Um, subcommittee. Schedule subcommittee for April.
April what?
Um, so potential dates would be Monday, April first, or Monday, April fifteenth.
Or April Fool's Day. How about we set it up for the first and don't show up, psych are going out.
I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine.
Officially, but I can't do the first, I haven't served her that.
He's got six million dollar hands. Well, yeah, right, two of the people officially on the committee are not here.
So we can.
The guy was added, was I added to the committee?
I think you were, I remember being there.
Yeah, you asked, can you just take my spot and I can not go anywhere?
Are you okay with the first or the fifteenth?
Sure, I love them both.
Whatever one you want.
Kathleen, where do you want?
We're for your schedule.
Kathleen, we know you're the meeting queen. Pick.
Let's do the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, April fifteenth, subcommittee, five thirty.
Sushi.
Bill Holdsworth has pizza.
Um, that also allows, um, if for some reason that doesn't work for the other. The first meeting in April, we have the chance to.
Adjust it. Uh, can you notate that Bill Holdsworth is buying pizza for that? No, no, Bill Batar, Monroe's son, is going to donate pizza. It's in the budget, I promise, it's in the budget. What else?
That's it.
That's it? Anybody else got anything to report? Everybody's good? Yes, motion to adjourn? I don't know, well, I'm making a motion, like, does somebody, I can't.
You just said you're making a motion. First got it, cool.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Uh, got a motion, second?
Second.
Oh, not the second, I thought you.
Seconded it.
Nicole Lupo, second, eight twenty-nine.